Good morning, everyone. We would like to open the special session February, sorry, January 4th, 2022. But if we could, we could have a motion to open the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
If you could stand to do pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice. I don't want to get in a hard time.
You have to practice.
Practice that a lot. I want to zip and write my mail. Okay. So, welcome, everyone. Just for the board members who just walked in, we, Tiffany Scarlatti's office dropped off a new memorandum at 8:43 this morning. So, obviously, many of us have not had a chance to read the entire thing. I imagine that Tiffany, you plan to read through it. So today's meeting really is one, given that there is great uniqueness to this project, as well as a lot of material for each of us to have read. We read Keith's that we received yesterday. And now Tiffany, I guess the first step would be for you to walk us through some of the points that you're making here. Then, because I believe after hearing Keith's points last week and then receiving the summary and us be able to go through that, we have a fuller understanding. But however, we will still have questions. So we could have you go through your point and then we can have Keith summarize any points that he would like to make. And then we will begin as a board to ask questions. I think that's probably the best process to go through. So with that, if you could give us a quick summary of the memorandum that you submitted.
You can't hear you, Tiffany.
Tiffany, can't hear you.
I thought I was unmuted already. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Tiffany Scarlatti, 45 Division Street for the applicants. Just as a point of order, I'd like to renew my request to incorporate the building department's record, the complete record for the, for this property into today's record. I know I mentioned it at the last hearing and I don't know if I got a positive response or not with regard to that.
Are you?
What specific records are you looking at? What, what, what records? Do you need all, like the paperwork?
The entire building, the entire building department zoning department file for the property known as 31 West Water Street. 31 Long Island Avenue, I apologize. I know that it's a tremendous amount of paperwork. One of the reasons I'm asking this is because we have had some issues lately with regard to foil. And I know there were some documents that were left out of original inadvertently, of course, left out of original foil requests that I only received yesterday. And so I just want to make sure that the board has a full and complete copy. I think it's in fairness to everyone, because the history of the property here is so important. In fairness to everyone, I think it's important that we have a complete record that includes all of the village's records with regard to the property.
Well, I would say, I believe the board has seen copies of all the history that we really need to focus on, which would be the process that there was an application, you know, we all know the remediation that began in 2008. There was an application for a two-story building. There was an application for a three-story building. There was an application for a two-story building. Then all of that was asked to be removed. And then there was the application for the in-kind one-story building, which is what the permit of the shell of that building was issued for and which you have asked to be stopped for us to make this review. So I think if you're referring to that timeline of information, I believe we have all of that. Is there something else? We do know that the planning board had issued, first that they had had an acceptance of the SEQA and the traffic pattern piece, and then that was, you know, I forgot the exact right word, but taken away or refunded because of the change. And so you've made that point. We have that history. So is there anything else specifically that you think would be important for the board to have to make sure that we have?
The answer to that, Chairman, is that I don't know the answer to that. As I said, I received two documents yesterday, or a bunch of documents yesterday, two of which are of utmost importance that I'll go over with the board this morning. But as I said, the foil requests were made for the file many months ago. And I realized that, you know, things get lost in the mix, especially on an application that's like this. I just want to make sure that there aren't any other sort of pieces of paper hiding somewhere that we're going to find later on that will turn us sideways in some way. That's it. And it's really for the protection of everyone. If, if the board is, is, is going to say no to that, I would just note my objection for the record.
Of course, we understand your point that we want to make sure that everyone has all the proper information. And certainly, there's no intent to be hiding anything. I can't believe.
No, I, no, I don't mean to imply that at all. I realize that things just get, you know, thrown into a box and as time goes on and with the number of building inspectors we've had recently. It's not shocking that it was not, that they weren't all, all the papers were not all together on this file.
Okay, so, yeah, please, thank you.
Okay. So I think it's important to talk about a couple of different issues. The last time that we were here, Council for VAX raised a couple of issues. One was the sufficiency of the building permit. Two was the G E I geological report, which they claimed told the involuntary abandonment period. They also argued that VAX has vested rights in the zoning district and the uses that were permitted on the site in 2008. And they also brought up a different issue, which I'll address very quickly, the applicant's standing with regard to this action. I think it's important to start sort of with a history of the project, just so that we understand where the timelines are and what goes on. So the Scavonis building back in 2008 was a single-story building containing four retail uses, and those retail uses were conforming uses. What was non-conforming about the property was the structure itself. In 2008, when the property was demolished and leased to Keyspan for the purpose, purposes of remediation, the building was demolished. At that time, as I said, the structure itself was non-conforming with regard to setbacks, parking, and a number of other issues. And the uses on that site were conforming. For example, they were a, there was a dog grooming store, there was a video rental store, there was a hairdresser, and one other use which escapes me at the moment. So those were conforming uses. So we're dealing with two different issues on the property, one of use and one of the structure itself. So in 2008, the building comes down. In 2015, in April of 2015, an easement is filed with the permission of the Scavonis and is submitted, an easement which requires them to comply with the site management plan for the property due to the remediation. At that time in 2015, I'm not sure what they did, but they didn't start, they didn't make any movement towards building or rebuilding the structure. The code does in fact say that they would have three years to reinstate a non-conforming structure after a cessation of use for three years. And that cessation of use is not very clearly defined. But I think everybody gave the Scavonis the benefit of the doubt and said, you know, we'll let this go until 2015, even though the building was demolished in 2008. They didn't have control over the building. And I think everyone agreed their time, that three years wasn't going to start running until they had control of the property back. It's very clear in the file, both by, by Tom Priato, who was the building inspector at the time, made a determination that that time period to, and this is just solely to reconstruct the structure itself with its nonconformities, expired on April 8th of 2018. And I think he made that determination based on one of, one of the pieces of paper that I received yesterday, which is a letter dated June 30th, 2017, which is the first application that was filed after VAX had the property returned to them. And that was the application that was filed for a three-story building. But in that letter, Dennis Downs, who was their attorney, said the three years referenced in the former village attorney Fred Thiel's letter commenced April 8th, 2015. After that, in July of 2017, Tom Priato, who was the building inspector at the time, issued a turn-down letter that said, based on the information I've received, and probably based on information from council for VAX and everything else, he made the determination that the property was returned to this, to VAX on April 8th, on April 8th, 2015. And their three-year period of non-use and their ability to rebuild the structure, the non-conforming structure, ended on April 8th, 2018. And that comes from their own council. The second, the second piece of paper that I've attached to today's submission is actually the public notice for the zoning board of appeals hearing in relationship to that particular application. And the comments, there's a public notice, and we always see public notices. And at the bottom of that public notice, it says, comments from the building inspector. A building and parking lot existed on this site, but was demolished in the cleanup of contaminated soils on the adjacent lot. There is documentation attesting to the fact that the building dimensions, coverage, neither of which were being increased, and parking are grandfathered for a three-year period after the cleanup, ending on April 8th, 2018. So there are a number of instances in the file itself in which 2018 is the date upon their period to rebuild the building in place and kind, the structure itself with its nonconformities, expired on that date. Counsel at the last meeting brought up a geological report from 2000, February 5th of 2020, and claimed that that told the involuntary, the abandonment period for the nonconforming structure. That geological report, I read through it. I've also read through the SMP, which applies to a number of properties, some of whom I represent the owners of, so I'm quite familiar with it. The geological report was done pursuant to the SMP, which is the site management plan. And the site management plan requires consistent monitoring. It requires the property owners via National Grid to comply with certain requirements, and this was one of them. The document that he submitted to you was really just construction considerations after a geological evaluation. And there were construction considerations. So it's not something that it was safe for the property to be built on again. It was safe as soon as that easement was given to the DEC and the SMP was in place. From that point forward, there were very strict instructions on how that property could be used, what it could be used for, and what the requirements were in order to be able to utilize the property in the future. I don't know why they chose to wait until February of 2020 to, to submit any kind of report like that, but I'm assuming that it was probably required by the DEC prior to any construction taking place on the property. And it really doesn't have anything to do with, with the case at hand or, or anything that, it doesn't have anything to do with anything, to be perfectly honest with you. The next thing I just want to talk about a little bit is that there are two separate issues here that we're, that we are talking about. One is of the building itself in that three-year period, and when that three-year period started. The other issue that we're talking about are the uses on the property. VAX seems to believe that they have some pre-existing right to code and/or zoning from, and the uses therein from 2008. The uses that were on the property at the time that it was demolished were conforming uses. So no statute regarding an abandonment can apply to a conforming use, because you can't abandon a conforming use. I will tell you that the uses that were on the property in 2008 were conforming at the time. And as a matter of fact, those uses are still conforming today. If they were to bring back those uses, they're conforming. Other uses in the code have changed. You don't have any right, there isn't, it's very basic tenet of law that you can't abandon a conforming use. And so their argument with respect to, we get to use uses from back in 2008, there is no mechanism that allows for that without a use variance from your board. And I think that once we get through the, the three-year period, and as I said, I do believe that the three-year period expired in 2018. I believe that we gave, that the village as a whole, I think, gave this, gave the family a starting point of 2015, when they returned, which got the property returned to them, even though very technically speaking, under the statute, if you read the statute, it says a continued period of non-use. So a period where it has not actually been used for a continuous period of three years. Very technically speaking, it probably started in 2008. But the building department made a determination that that period did not start until the property was returned to them in 2015, and therefore expired in April of 2018. In 2000, and, you know, to be perfectly honest, VAX made a choice not to utilize that letter to rebuild the non-conforming structure in its, where it had been located, and chose instead to file application after application in front of this board and the planning board that required extensive variances, extensive planning work. And somehow, it just never got done. Why it never got done, I, I just don't know. The last thing that I want to quickly address, and I may want to address the board again, actually, go back. So even though we're at the point where I feel like this, in 2018, their time expired to build this building, in fact, the village issued a building permit in October of 2022. The building permit application, as VAX had argued at their last, at the last hearing, was that the building permit was sufficient and that any deficiencies could be cured. And while it's true that there are deficiencies that can be cured during the construction process, there remain several insurmountable defects in the permit and the associated application that render it invalid. And this is honestly just assuming, this is assuming for argument's sake, that in fact, they're entitled to some type of building permit at this point. The application fails to meet all, any of the criteria under Chapter 92, Section, oh, sorry, excuse me, under Code Section 92.7B1 of the village code. And one of the most important things that it's missing is a statement of use. It's not as simple as a statement that the property is commercial, as the building permit says. As previously illustrated to this board in the, in the memorandum that I handed in on the 20th, any review of a project before the administrative agencies of the village talks about the use. And as we all know, that's an integral part of how you determine parking, how you determine the effect on the community, how you determine the size of the building, the massing of the building, what is being, and it all ties directly into what is being used for. And those, that requirement of a discussion of use, you find in numerous sections of the code. There is no section of the village code that permits a building permit for a shell of a building without that statement of use. And these are just minor issues, but again, here we are. Section 92.7B3 requires the submission of an electrical permit. We don't have that. It requires the submission of a build, of a plumbing permit. We don't have that. Section 92.7C1 requires that the applicant submit a survey of the property that indicates drainage structures, lot lines, the relationships of structures on adjoining properties, widths and grades of adjoining streets. They didn't submit even a survey when this building permit was issued. There is no surveyor from, like, survey from a licensed surveyor in the file with regard to this building permit. They're also within the flood, flood hazard overlay zone and didn't include any of the documentation from the architect on the project as to whether the flood proofing is adequate or, or anything else. Again, all of the issues that I talked about last time are still outstanding, the SEQA planning, say, plan approval, ARB approval, those things are still all outstanding. I know the applicant, VAX did submit a proposed amendment to their building permit, which it looks like made some minor changes to the building itself, and then they fixed the illegal contractor. And as far as I can tell, that's about all that happened. I don't know if the building department has issued any type of modification to that building permit, but I guess it's part of the file and should be addressed. And I think that's it for now, unless anyone has any questions. And I'd be happy to answer questions after the fact as well.
I think we want to wait. Does anyone have any specific questions they want to ask right now, or do we want to wait to? Yeah. Okay, so the whole question's until, no, so Carrie, you just need to authorize Keith to be able to speak.
Keith, are you available?
So you see them?
Yes.
Good morning. This is Matthew Wengler from Brown Almond de Leo. Chief Brown is on the line. He's on the, he's by cell. His number is the 631-807-5968 number.
Okay. Keith, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. I, I heard the rebuttal arguments made by the opposition. I, my staff and I put together a 17-page memorandum in support of the building permit application and countering the arguments made by the opposition relative to the issuance of the building permit. I think it's clear that the building permit at this point was issued properly and that there was certain amendments that were made to the building permit, as I outlined when I was in front of the board last time. Those amended documents were all submitted to the village and rectified any inconsistencies in the building permit application. Notably, the plans were revised to match exactly, in fact, to be two feet less script footage than what was previously on the property. And I think at this point, it's abundantly clear that the, so VAX has had the right to re-establish the building that was previously there prior to the remediation. To not allow them to re-establish the building would be a severe hardship on them. And as was indicated several times, this is an application for shell permit only. And many of the legal arguments that were made were just a matter of throwing everything up against the wall and seeing what will stick. So we're very confident that the proper process was followed here. One example is the sequel process. We argued very compellingly that there, this permit was not subject to the secret review process at all. And that our client has the right to go back in and begin construction to restore their building that was on that site up until 2008. So I understand that the opposition just submitted a document first thing this morning. I've not had an opportunity to review it as I got in at about, you know, five to nine, five minutes before the hearing started. I don't think there's much, you know, more to add, but we would like the opportunity to review what was submitted and if we have to, submit a sur reply for the board's consideration. And based on that, we appreciate the opportunity to, to appear before the board. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I guess there are several points here, and one of the most important is for us to figure out, one, the memo from the lawyer Fred Thiel at the time. What was the intent of that? granted, I guess there's the question, Tiffany, that you're saying that it shouldn't even have been written, or you gave it no official valuation, but given that the building inspector's role is to make the determination, and certainly back at the time, Tom Priata, as well as Denise Shorn, is that right? Carrie? That, that they looked at it and viewed it as something that was acceptable. So I guess for the board, are we comfortable with that being something that was acceptable? Or do we want to ask questions about that? Anybody?
That what was acceptable?
That the memo from Fred Thiel, that the intent was to, you know, with the follow-up email that he wrote, that he was asked to write that from the mayor at the time and one of the trustees who was mostly involved with the project to have a note to the file for National Grid to, I guess, begin the process and start the lease with 31 Long Island Avenue. I believe that was the intent for that. And clearly, the building inspector at the time, as well as lawyer advising, accepted it, as well as has the current building inspector continued to accept that. So my question is, are we comfortable?
With 2015 as the initiation of the three-year period?
No, no. Just the Fred Thiel letter. One of the points that the applicant has made on this is that that shouldn't have carried any weight, because.
Well, the building inspector is supposed to be the one who generates that. But to your point, because the building inspector has accepted it and the village attorney accepted it, it would seem logical that even if he didn't write it, he's accepted it. And they kept accepting it over and over.
Right, so that's, I just want to make sure.
Nobody ever said this doc, we can't use this document, although technically, it wasn't really supposed to be generated by the village attorney, didn't have the authority, but they kept accepting it, so.
Right, so.
I would be inclined to agree that if they're accepting it, they're accepting it.
That's, I just want, because I think that's the first point we have to make sure we're comfortable with, or ask questions about it. And then because what that memo wrote was to say that an in-kind building, you know.
Identical.
Identical.
That's the main, identical.
Right, so if the size is identical, or I guess can be less, because they're saying it's like.
Well, but the letter says identical. That's what the letter says.
So because then, because that kind of, we have to do one and then look to see what it actually authorizes them to do.
It says, "In short, they may construct an identical replacement of the building in retail uses without any additional approvals from the village."
But right there, the fact that they're not assigning uses at this stage.
Well, that's a whole other issue.
Right, so we gotta get to that, right. Right, that's, I think we need to.
So I don't know, do we want to? I don't know how, what do other people feel about that?
Well, it's consistent with previous approvals affecting to build a non-kind in the period of time that existed from 2008 to 2018.
Right. Do you want to say in-kind somewhere?
The letter says, "First, the Chavones are entitled to an in-kind replacement of the building in use, which are currently on the subject property. In short, they may construct an identical replacement of the building in retail uses without any additional approvals." And I think this letter was restating the law at the time as well. That was the intent of the letter, just to restate what it said at the time. And the current building inspector checked those provisions before he referenced the letter. So a pre-existing non-conforming structure can be replaced in a non-kind, right? That was the intent of that law. Because it was involuntarily discontinued within three years, that was the.
Right.
Right. So is everyone okay with that? All right. Parts of the piece there is, I guess, identical versus in-kind. How it has to be.
In-kind means the same. Doesn't mean this, I don't know, that's a question for you, in-kind and identical. Are they the same or not the same as you by the law? I don't know. Right, right.
Do we have that? And has it changed?
No, it didn't change.
Okay.
The question on the table is whether to accept this Fred Theo letter as guiding, essentially.
Well, certainly, he's really, as Liz said, restating the code. So we're just accepting the code, even though the letter wasn't technically generated by the building inspector. The building inspectors have reviewed it and accepted it. So it's almost as though they, yeah, they wrote it. They would have said, "This is a contrary opinion," exactly. And they did not, so.
The question on the table is, therefore, it's Fred Theo's interpretation of the code.
Well, no, it's really just is.
It's really the interpretation of the building inspector, right?
Right.
Because they're the ones.
But Liz says he's just restating the code, so it's not really an interpretation.
It should be. Right, he wrote it so that National Grid could begin their process.
Your volunteers wanted.
And to make sure that.
That their building could be replaced and their uses could be.
Exactly.
Liz, maybe you could help me. What I'm not clear, and the reason I'm not offering a clear opinion is I'm not clear on the question. Can you state the question on the table right now? What are we trying to answer? I'm not clear about that. I apologize.
Well, the reason I was asking is that one of the things that was in the first part of this stop work order is that this memo, that we shouldn't be using this memo. That's one of the points that was made. So I'm trying to say, do we think we should be, right? And so I just want to, let's clear that piece first, because that's one of the first pieces. And then.
Every application that was submitted on this property in my office. Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Keith Brown, may I please address this point?
Sure.
So we went at length through the analysis of what is now Section 310.6, abandonment of the use. And it's clear to me that the intent by the Chavones was never to abandon the use. And the language contained in 310.6, which was the modern version of what was identified in the Theo memo, says, and I'm reading verbatim, "In cases where such non-conforming use of a building or structure designed for such use, when it has been voluntarily discontinued for a period of twelve months." And then it says, "When it has, in fact, actually been used for a continuous period of three years." So the three-year period only applies when there's a voluntary sensation of the use. The code, the problem here is that we're in a gray area because the code does not really have a clear-cut provision for this scenario because the scenario is so unique, as I argued last time I was in front of the board. So we would entertain a position and would submit to the board that because there was no voluntary sensation, that it was involuntary sensation, and the intent of the Chavones was always to rebuild a structure there, that they should be entitled to rebuild there because they are replacing what was there. And with respect to the second issue, the in-kind, in-kind under law means approximately what was there. It can't be expanded because then we're into a different part of the non-conforming provisions of the code. But clearly, when we're replacing with a building that's less than two feet, that is an in-kind replacement. So I just want to put to rest this issue of the fact that this provision of the code doesn't even apply and there shouldn't be a three-year limitation. Now, there's several arguments to be making the alternative to combat the multitude of arguments that are made by the opposition. But this is one of our seminal ones, was that, you know, the Theo interpretation, you know, which was a memo to the file, which is what it says on top, you know, has very little legal authority whatsoever. It really comes down to the enforcer of the code, which is the building inspector. And as we all know, black letter law in New York State, the building inspector is the enforcer of the code. You, the zoning board, are the interpreters of the code. But I hope I'm clear.
I'd like to address the board as well, if I could.
Sure.
As the board has talked about, the Fred Theo letter was basically a restatement of the law. And I think counsel just misread it when reading it to you. There, and we use this provision regularly in the village. For example, and you all are very well aware of this. We've had fires in the village where buildings have been completely decimated. And those buildings do not meet setbacks. They are non-conforming buildings in the village business district that have been reconstructed within the three-year period of time based upon 310.6. And they've been reconstructed with their non-conforming status with regard to dimensional setbacks and parking. I think counsel is confusing the use with the structure itself again. And the three-year period, I don't know why he thinks the three-year period doesn't exist. It's in the code. And if everyone's going to accept the Fred Theo letter, they also have to, you also have to accept the letters issued by Tom Priato in 2017, which made a determination that was given to VAX that their three, and actually, the letter written by Dennis Downs submitted with the 2017 application says, "Our three-year period started running on April 8, 2015." Tom Priato determined, made a determination more than once and reiterated it in more than one document that the board has that that period of time to construct the non-conforming structure ended April 8 of 2018. There is no mechanism other than a variance from this board in which this period of time could be extended. More of that.
May I?
That determination is actually challenged to this quarter time, which it wasn't.
Right.
They did, right. They also had the opportunity to challenge this multiple times, knowing that Tom Priato made a determination that their period of time to build a like-kind structure expired in 2017 or 2018. In my mind, would have triggered me to do something to extend that period of time. And yet, that period of time expired and lapsed without VAX taking any action to extend it.
But there's two different issues going on with respect to Mr. Priato's determination. The turned-down letter that's being referenced and the last paragraph relate to the expansion and the building of, I believe this is the three-story structure, yes. So clearly, when it came to the expansion, whether it be the three-story or the two-story, right? That's what was being referenced by Mr. Priato, then building inspector. What we're talking about now is the third application was just to restore the like-kind building, the non-conforming structure that was there, that but for the fact of the remediation, that structure would still be there today. And I think that the board has to keep that in the context, that if it wasn't for National Grid's remediation of the property, that building would still be there today and that my client should have a right to rebuild that structure.
Can I ask, gentlemen, though, how do you respond to Ms. Garlato's comment that in the case of a fire, which is also involuntary, that that owner presumably is required to reconstruct within three years, if I understood her correctly? So why would that not also apply in this case?
Because a casualty fire is different than the situation we're presented with, right? Because a casualty fire is what non-conforming uses are directly addressing. When every code provision is written in any village or any town in New York State, they're written with the idea in mind that what can a property owner, what rights do they have with respect to a casualty fire replacing a non-conforming building? That's not what we have here. We have a remediation done by the public utility, right? That was unforeseen and completely involuntary. So my client, you know, should not be punished for the fact that they agreed to allow National Grid to lease the property in order to remediate it. That was something that was beneficial to the entire community.
I just want to point out, counsel himself says that this was not, that this was involuntary. In fact, there was a voluntarily signed lease by VAX to National Grid for the property. So to say that this was completely, it is an involuntary abandonment, and I'll give them that. As I said, we're giving them the three years. The three years has just expired. And there is no extension for that irrespective of counsel's arguments.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Try and, because let's forget the memo for now. The next thing is really, what is the timeline? What's the right timeline that we should? Is it Tom Priata's interpretation that it was April 2015, which would bring us to April 2018? However, if their intent was never to abandon, but always to build something. Now, they tried a two-story, they tried a three-story, they tried a two-story, you know. There was a moratorium that this board actually gave them an exemption in 2021, December of 2021, I believe. So does the timeline switch because of that? Given that they were in front of the different boards asking for approval, even though they had turned down letters, is that accepted as an intent to not abandon? And I'm asking the question, I don't.
I just, I just think the problem that I'm quite persuaded by is that I can see why there might have been reasons for delay beyond the three years because they had more ambitious plans for the rebuild of this property. But I don't understand why their lawyer at the time didn't file and ask for an extension from this board so that there could be room to maneuver and to continue to try and seek a greater, more ambitious project. The fact that they didn't do that, this feels problematic.
As I recall, and this is just memory, Dennis always, his position, Dennis Downs, who was the attorney, his position always was that because they were in process, that.
I guess that's kind of, I didn't even know that. That's my question.
He was always saying that, you know, because they started the process, they're, you know.
And they had not gotten.
And then they had not gotten approvals and still, right, right. But they had started the process, so they're in process, so they've already.
His position was that it told that period.
Right.
Is that true? There was no cessation, there was no decision from any of the, from this board or any board saying, you know, we're either rejecting this or we're.
Well, definitely.
Continuing continuously or.
Oh, I see.
I was just wondering whether there was any point at which it did kind of die and then they came back and they should have asked for an extension.
Point on board was, has it really been? I think that goes to their intent. I think that goes to their intent, that they never intended to abandon, you know, a structure on that property.
And I just, I just want to point out that intent is not in your village code with respect to abandonment of use. Intent is not anything here that's suggested. And I would just ask the board to read that section of the village code because there is no intent involved in whether or not they wanted to abandon it or not. I mean, you know.
It doesn't seem.
I knock my house down today and say to you all, I don't, I'm going to, I intend to rebuild it in seven years. And just because I say I intend to rebuild it, but I'm going to ask for, you know, a three-story McMansion instead. But I still intend to rebuild my house and have every right to do that. I go through a process, can't get my three-story house, and then I'm allowed to have a building permit to restore the building without any variance relief?
I would.
I just want the board to think of the greater implication of allowing that to occur and allowing an abandonment period to have really, to just be based on someone's intent. Because honestly, you don't know what that is. It's not in the code. It's something, you know, very subjective in its nature and the code is not intended to be subjective. Their intent, to be quite honest with you, was to have a three-story building. They then got shot down on the three-story building. Their intent was to then build a two-story building. They got shot down on the two-story building. Then they came in with a purported one-story building, which was actually a two-story building, confessed that they were going to have a two-story building with the Shabbat on the second floor and the first floor was going to be 7-Eleven. And while they're doing that, their time is ticking. They wanted a larger building. Their intent was to have a larger building. So even though intent is completely not relevant, if you want to discuss it, their intent was for something else completely. And when all else failed and they could not get approval, and I'm not saying they couldn't get approval for any of the buildings that they tried to get approval for. We're all very aware of how long and torturous those processes were. They could have gotten approval for a building. They chose to do something else instead.
Well, they chose to do something which was within their legal right to do so, being that they had a piece of property that had been taken from them and replaced to them and that they were under, and they had the ability to, you know, see what they could potentially build on it. But I disagree. Using your example, counselor, as far as the person who, you know, demolishes part of their building and wants to rebuild it, that there is an intent built into that. It might be implicit, but they voluntarily did that. That's not the case here. There was never an intent to not have a building on that location. So they attempted to enlarge the building. That was within their legal right. But their intent was to continue to have something on that property that they had purchased that was taken away from them. So I disagree.
And I would.
Liz, can I ask you a question? So let's remove the word intent from all of this. They, you know, they started the process of different applications to be reviewed. I mean, how does the village look upon?
Right, that's.
That, meaning, we all know that even applying. We all know that even applying for anything can take a number of years to go through all of the boards. Once you start the process, isn't that?
I think that's something you're gonna have to decide.
Okay.
I don't think that's written in the code.
Okay.
Specific tolling provision.
Right.
Uh, that we can rely on in this particular, you know, code for you.
Because.
Have to decide that, and whether or not that's something we want to take notice of, is that, you know, they had submitted their plans and they were going through this process and. As a result, you know, then there was whatever all.
More times.
Right.
Ever in village government ever identified to them the, the time requirement at that point in time that they were using up as they.
But also, it was referenced in, in the, um, what Tiffany has been talking about. The, one of the comments from the building inspector over and over, that date of two thousand eighteen being the expiration date was referenced. In comments, so everybody knew that, but, but that may be not really the question is whether or not, because they were in process. It wasn't like they weren't trying to build something, and even the Fred, Fred Field letter says that. You know, they have the right to do something different. But there's no right guarantee that it's gonna be approved. There's gonna be approved, they were into the approval process, and they did try various things, but they have a right to try various things.
So, so Liz, can I just ask a question of you, which is, um, yes, it's the responsibility of their council to advise them on a three year limit. And that that's an issue, da, 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 but.
The council acknowledged it in a letter that was cited.
Right, right, exactly. So, so my question is, so since we went past that two thousand eighteen deadline. And they kept on coming back with new proposals, et cetera. Is there some responsibility of the village to say at some point, for the record, you're past this, 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 you, you've gone past the deadline? You need to formally apply for an extension for us to allow this continued application process.
There's no, there's no extension provision. What, when I say that the two, that, that designated two thousand eight, twenty, twenty eighteen date. Could have been challenged to your board, could have been challenged within ninety days of the issuance of that determination by Tom. There's no, you know, there's nothing in the code that would allow them, when they're getting close to that three year date, to come back and say, oh, can I have an extension?
Well, Dennis Down, I, I, I'm just, I can't, you know, I'm not Dennis Downs, but his position always was that they've, the. They submitted it by that date, so they're fine. Because they started the process within the three year period to rebuild, you know, it could take five years to get a permit.
So here's to my, that's exactly my point. If that's the case, and that was Dennis's assumption going forward, then if the village, no member of the village, no board of the village ever said. Sorry, that's not enough, you passed the two, three years.
No, that would have been done if the, the building inspector who accepted the new application.
So, so no, what I'm, what I'm saying is after two thousand eighteen, nobody that represents the village, whether it's the building inspector or anybody else. Has ever objected to the fact that the three years have expired. So to me, that means we have to accept that, that Dennis's theory, which it was, it, it initiated before two thousand eighteen. And it's been an ongoing application process since, and therefore it's still within bounds.
That makes sense.
You guys just wait until we ask you to talk for a minute while we are talking, because we really need to. Work through this, and, and we'll ask you questions when we have them. And, and that's partly why I started with, are we going with Fred? And then the more important thing is, when does the clock start or should it stop? And we just need to feel comfortable to understand what that is. And what's, you know, interpreting the code the right, correct way.
Well, I'm willing to kind of, for me, settle on the fact that I'm not gonna hold them to three years. Because we've been entertaining these various applications since. Yeah, we've been a party too, we haven't objected to it. I think for us to come back now and hold them onto, onto account on the three years. But, but, but my question is, that doesn't mean that I'm coming. With the fact that there's a permit that's been issued. The uses being addressed.
Right, so that's why we're taking each piece. No, 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 we have to take each piece and we have to get to that.
Out all the other permits that Tiffany cited. I need some explanation as to why it's okay, the village should just blanket approve a skeleton building or whatever. Uh, without electric permits, plumbing permits, and all the other things, and a statement, a clear statement of uses. I don't, I don't see why that's okay.
Right, so that's why. There's so many points that we have to get from, so we have, we're kind of trying to go chronologically. So, Ham, are you comfortable um with not, let's just talk about the three years.
I've been on the board since two thousand nineteen, and I accepted when the permits were presented to us. For the variance, and I think we did our job because we indicated that we were not giving them. The ability to build. So I don't think there's any form of abandonment, I think they presented it to us. And then when they came with the letter indicating that they were dropping all the original permits and go back. That's where I have the confusion, but effectively, we were doing the proper thing and doing the variance. And we did not accept what they wanted to build.
So you're okay with the three years having expired?
Yes, I am.
Okay, alright, so.
Well, it, it actually isn't that the three is expired, it's that they, because they started the process within the three years, it's acceptable.
Right, because we're not, we're not saying we're changing the code, or, we're not trying to change the code or anything, we're, we still understand.
They met the standard of, of beginning the process within three years. Ongoing process. Right, but.
And they were proactive.
Yeah.
In.
And I don't think they had the base that they intend to replace that building in some form.
I think you could make that specific to this particular application with unique facts and circumstances as well.
And that's what we would need to do, because to Tiffany's point, we don't want to open it up that. And, and we're not using the word intent, we're saying process and timeline in that regard.
Well, there was a moratorium, and they had to specially apply to the trustees to get.
That was the month that took.
Well, you know, it all, it all takes time.
Um, so Tiffany, I know you wanted to say something.
I did, and, and it's, and it's really just, you know, I, I, I heard a couple of board members say that they, you know, that. Vax was not reminded or told by the village that their period of time to build a like kind building. Um, non, in non-conforming location, um, was not really given to them, and that date was not really talked about. And I just want to point out to the board that in the previous memo that I've submitted to the board. As part of every application, there were three different applications in two thousand seventeen, nineteen, and twenty. As part of every application, the memorandum that came from Nelson Pope and Voorhees evaluating the application. Noted that Tom Priato, and I submitted these to the board, noted at the bottom that Tom Priato had made a determination. That their period of time to build a non-conforming building in the same location expires April eighth of two thousand and eighteen. So to say that they were unaware of it, and that it was up to the village somehow to take care of this for them, is just wrong. I, I don't want to say this, but unfortunately, they probably got bad advice. And you know what? That happens. Getting bad advice. It does not give them free rein to then decide, okay, or the board free rein to then decide. Okay, well, because, you know, they didn't do anything with it, then we're gonna just hold this period uncontrollably, just because they submitted an application. They were not trying to build a like kind building, they could have gotten a building permit in two thousand and eight for a like kind building and built it. Not to, it was a choice on their part, and they were reminded at every turn and in every application. That their time period to build that like kind, non-conforming structure expired in two thousand and eighteen. And that's, I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I think we understand your point, but I think we are um, gonna move on from that point. Um, and. Not, not right now, we'll get to the public piece. It's okay, we, we're, we're fine. Um, we will, we will open it up to the public at the, at the proper time. So if. We've gotten through, so Keith.
Yes.
Did you wanna make a point, or are you?
No, just very quickly, um, I just wanted to just address a couple of things that were said. Um, you know, in terms of the, you know, the, the purpose and behind zoning boards. Is to, uh, as the case was, as indicated over the years, you know, uh, through. Uh, common law decisions by the courts, is that the purpose of the zoning board of appeals is to um. Be a relief valve for hardships that are placed on, on property owners. Uh, with respect to the application of the code. And, and I believe that, uh, Emmett Smith, that the interpretation being presented by the opposition. Is a real draconian um, reading of, of this village code. And in terms of precedent, I brought it up at the first hearing, and I think it bears reiterating. That we are so off the reservation with this application. That I, 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 there is no possible way that there would ever be another case of, of this kind in this village. Um, so the, the application and, and of sorry decisive uh, to a future case. Uh, is remote to say the least. So I, I don't think the board should be uh concerned with that. Um, and, and I, I think the, the board is spot on by talking about um, the, the continuous. Uh, you know, attempts by the Chavones to reestablish uh, this building on the property in, in some form or, or another. Um, and, and I think that just, I, I just counted up the uh, moratorium period. Appears to me to be uh, at a minimum of one year and seven months. So there should be some application of the tolling of their ability to uh, get a building permit during that period of time. So, thank you, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think the next point we really need to get to is what Alex is referring to. Is the fact that a building permit was issued as a shell only at this point. Um, without including the use. Um, and the way the permit was written is that. It would get, they would build the building, and then they would need, even though if they had done the identical. Sure, thank you.
One story commercial building with retail use that may require further review. This permit is for a shell only and will require additional permits for the interior build outs. Permit is in accordance with the letter dated March seventeenth, two thousand eight by Saccom Village. In regard to the cleanup of the site under the jurisdiction of the state D E C and allowable replacement of the building with leases.
So, right there.
Retail use that may require further review.
Right, so the use piece that we um. Know has to be looked at, they will have to come in front of boards.
But can I ask, what, what is the justification for separating these applications?
Why can't? Well, according to the village code, you can't, correct? There's a, could you read that provision, Liz? I don't have that.
Segmentation.
Right. I mean, I have one here under section three hundred dash seventeen point two B.
Yes.
Number one. Um, it says, no building permit shall be issued for the erection, construction, reconstruction, structural alteration, demolition, restoration, repair. Or moving of any building or structure in part thereof unless the plans and intended use indicates such a building or structure designated. Or structure designated and intent to conform in all respects to the provisions of this chapter. And when approved, of, when approval of the architecture, uh, I'm sorry, the Board of Historic Preservation Architecture Review is required. Pursuant to article fifteen of this chapter, said board members has issued its approval. So it's, it's, the code states that to get a building permit, you have to have. Plans for the structure and also the use designated, because our code, all the codes are based on use. Even the New York State Building Code, the first thing you do to establish what you need to do to build a building is know what its use is. And that puts you in a category of how to construct the building.
Right.
The zoning code is based on use, so I don't think you can separate.
Well, we spent a lot of time on the use when we wrote our neglect uh, negative letter. And because we.
Non-declaration.
Right.
Yes, we spent a, a, a enormous amount of time on the use of that property. And we objected unless they could give us, they were talking about putting something like a seven or eleven at, on the property.
Right, but this new, this is a totally separate application, which doesn't describe a use. So we can't really look at what those previous applications said.
That's my concern, I mean, even if you go back to the Fred Field.
Also in section ninety-two dash seven, B one, B, a statement of the use or occupancy of all parts of the land and of the building or structure.
So the code.
Is required.
Yeah.
Yeah, the code clearly requires a specific use attached to the building in order to achieve a, a permit.
Yeah, but yeah, e- e- even if you go back to the Fred Field letter from two thousand eight. It says they're entitled to an in-kind replacement of the building and use.
Right.
Which are currently the, on the subject premises.
Right.
Uh, they make instruct an identical replacement of the building and retail uses without any additional approvals from the village. So I just don't see how the village can issue a permit without knowing what the other half of that equation is.
Exactly. Right, exactly.
Plan uses are.
Right.
Or did the building inspector say? I'll give you the permit shell only, and you have to come back to all the boards. When you know your use, when you finalize your use.
But he can't issue a permit, I mean, can the building inspector?
The issue is, is, um, I don't know if that's been done in this village before in particular.
We would have to give a variance to do that, wouldn't we?
Well, also, it's not that it says retail use.
Right.
I don't know, it's in, you know, that's something this board should decide and think about, is, you know, this is in the office district now, right? Um, and they think that retail use, certain retail uses are permitted in the office district, they're listed in the use tables.
So one question.
Get back to, are we going to the two thousand and E?
Well, that's the other question.
Because that's a, that's an important difference. Are we?
At the time.
No.
Right.
And so.
That's not a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Right.
Has a constitutional protected right to continue.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Um, or, or continue, right?
Yes.
But if it's a conforming use at the time, that, that doesn't, that's not afforded that same right.
So that means that if they were to rebuild and have the same uses. We would have to give them a variance for the same uses that they had in two thousand eight?
No, those uses, I think, like barber shops actually permitted it.
Right, okay.
But you don't have a pre-existing, you know, non-conforming or some sort of right to a prior zoning district. You have the right, you, you have the right to use the property for what's permitted under the zoning district that applies. Um, at the time that you're seeking your approvals, right?
So they could put back.
If you had a conform use, right, so then you could continue to seek a conform use.
Right.
Okay, even, even, even if the definition has changed.
Yeah, it's not business one, it's almost different. This is significant, because I think in prior applications, they were seeking a convenience.
Right.
A twenty-four hour.
So this is a really big, this is a major point of how we're supposed to interpret. Because. Um, I was under the impression that we were going back to the two thousand and E. What was permissible, what was permissible on that spot, because.
Who's going back?
No.
The applicant, the applicant has not indicated what they're gonna do.
We don't know what they're gonna do.
Right. I mean, what we're saying.
That's what I'm asking the question.
Just to be very clear, what we're saying, Liz, is that they could put back without any, without us doing anything. They could put back the identical building and the identical uses.
The four uses.
Without those four uses, without us having to review that, correct?
Well, to the extent that those uses are permitted under the.
Right, right, right. We would just have to confirm that they're. Right, we would just have to confirm that they're permitted under the new, okay.
But I don't, I don't know if that's their intention at all, we don't know.
Right, no, no, I know.
Right, so I think this board needs to consider.
Can I ask?
Whether you want, first, we want to separate the use from the building permit, and second, what, what uses, what zoning, you know, would apply.
My, my question to you as the village attorney is, do you have any thoughts about the, uh, ability of the applicant to apply for this shell structure without uses stated?
I think that's generally done, um, for structures that are like, almost like malls or meat malls. When it, I mean, like, you know, you're making the, it's, or for a commercial structure where they're gonna have conforming uses. As long, you know.
And they don't know who's gonna come in.
Right, you're gonna rent the property for, I think that's done sometimes. I don't think that's entirely unheard of.
But is there, is there, is there either precedent or?
I don't know if there's precedent.
In the way of Arbor Village to allow.
Well, we don't know, but see, that goes back to use again because we don't know if this is like a mini mall. Because we don't, they, they would have to, that would be a, a use, meaning that you're constructing a mall, right?
Well, that's one instance, or a commercial building where you're gonna do, you know, a contracting use or something that's permitted in that zoning district.
But they have to be permitted.
And it's done when the uses are permitted in that zoning district.
Like.
Here, there are certain retail uses that are permitted in, in the office district.
So what I'm asking though, does the village code allow for the possibility of the applicant applying for a shell structure without the uses stated? So long as it's understood that the ultimate use is permitted, have to conform with the current code of zoning districts.
I mean, I, it says that the statement of use should be in there, in two, two sections.
I, I mean, I was asking a rhetorical question because that's my instinct, and I just wanted to test your feeling about it. I mean, to me, this is becoming clearer, which is that I, I don't think this permit is valid if it doesn't, if it doesn't address the uses. The application doesn't address the uses. So in my view, I think we should vote to reject the permit based on a failure to state the use of this building and, uh, and make them, you know, go back to the drawing board with a new application.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just on that note, with respect to what that board member said, and I apologize, I don't have Zoom, um, video capability. But I, I believe we, we do have the ability to always amend the permit, uh, if that's the board's, uh, inclination, based on what he just said. Um, you know, there is a, a process where we could submit an amended building permit application and, and fix any inconsistencies.
You can always, you can always, um, amend the application, um, and include the uses so that, um, there's comfort from the board to understand, you know, what exactly you're building.
I also think though, because the building is clearly not identical to what was there, I, I would think it would need to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board also. I mean, just for the, I mean, we're, we, it's not a consideration of ours, but it looks totally different than the previous building.
The appearance.
The appearance, just the appearance.
One might say better, but.
Right, well.
That's not our call.
Right.
Right.
But also, another question, that's a good point, but another question, just to make sure we cross, you know, check that box, is do we know that the building inspector who issued this permit also evaluated whether there might be any potential need for variances from the Z V A? Well, even though it's, even though.
Use variance, use variance, you mean?
No, I mean, I mean, no, I mean.
Well, but if we're saying that they can reconstruct the building, they don't need variances, they don't need variances.
As long as we've seen the actual plans and.
Oh, yeah.
We know, and we can verify that exactly as they.
No, there's been.
But there's enough detail.
There's enough detail to the plan of the outside and to understand the parking and to understand, uh, where the mechanics are gonna go on the top. I mean, it's, it's pretty thorough. I believe the building inspector has had multiple conversations with the applicant. The applicant has taken those suggestions and done what he's been asked to do. So I, I think, I think, um, that's why the comfort is there, to have approved the shell.
But isn't it possible that once you build the building and you build, and you, and you lay out all the parking spaces and then you decide the uses of the parking configuration?
Well, exactly, that's why we can't.
That's exactly the point, your parking change based on your use. If you're gonna make, you know, if an exercise studio is permitted in the office district, that has a significantly different parking requirement than one of your other retail uses.
It's kind of like segmenting, right? A little bit, Liz, because I know on some projects in the village, they'll, you'll stick something somewhere so that ultimately in the end, you can put something else where you want it to be, which is not really where the village would like it to be, but you have to put it there. So, um, the use, that's why you need the use.
Well, that's why I said earlier, it sounds like a segmentation problem.
The other question.
I thought that at the time, when, when we negated their variances, we indicated that the, what they were asking for, we did not accept.
But this is a whole new application, though.
It's a whole new application. But there, I think that we should review the new permit at present.
Well, but I think, but we're a variance committee, right? And so what, what, what Scott is saying is that they're simply seeking to rebuild the exact same structure, same dimensions, same setbacks, same parking, et cetera.
Which they are permitted to do.
In case they don't need a variance.
No, 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 they don't need a variance.
They don't, my, my, but my point was that if they are already deciding now where the parking's gonna be, that could change once they actually know what the uses are. And so it seems to me, you need to have, but we need to have an application, the village does, that has enough information so we can make a sensible determination. I don't think there's enough in here to make a determination.
So the other, well, yeah, this is.
Go ahead.
The other question I had was about SECRE. I mean, you both, you, maybe you can both address this because you both have very different opinions about the requirement of SECRE because every action requires SECRE, but, um, I guess you're saying that there's an exception to this because it's a reconstruction and it doesn't require SECRE?
Right.
Is that?
Correct. It falls under at least two parts. It's a type-two action under at least two parts of the SECRE regs.
So.
And Tiffany, how do you respond to that?
The building is over four thousand square feet, it's subject to SECRE, full SECRE review. The use itself is subject to a full SECRE review. We very often have applications before all of these, all of your boards, um, in which the use becomes a significant issue and sometimes the use becomes the issue that causes, um, something to be given a positive declaration or to be changed in some cases, we don't like that use there. Um, so i- i- in my mind, without doing the proper environmental analysis on the use itself and how that affects the community, um, we have failed to do SECRE, which is still required. I don't think this property is exempt.
Or would it, or would it, I, they would have to limit themselves to uses that wouldn't require, so they're not putting.
Well, but doesn't every? It doesn't matter if they're confirmed it or not, it requires SECRE. So it's, you're saying the uses is what's gonna trigger SECRE, not actually maybe the reconstruction of the building?
I believe that it's. But if the board is inclined, then they should at least do SECRE on the use itself and the impact that that use has on the community.
So can I, can I ask?
Because I will tell you, I mean, me looking at the building and it might be very obvious to all of you, it's a big white albatross. We just got rid of a big white albatross across the street. And yet, here we have an application for another big white albatross with what looks like a top clock tower in the middle, where a seven eleven sign would go really well. So I feel like.
Tiffany. Your opinion, um, on how it's going to look is more for the H P A R B, not for us.
Indeed.
I don't think a one-story, the parapet is anything close to what the big white, um, building you're referring to, so let's just move on from that.
Okay. Suffice it to say that I believe that SECRE applies in this instance and that.
I guess I have, I have one question, though. Wasn't there a SECRE study done for, uh, the two-story building? That was one of the applications, even though I know it's a historical application. Wasn't that, uh, SECRE study done and it was actually accepted by the planning board at one point until the use was changed?
Well, but this is a whole new action, so it would require a whole new SECRE. So the other SECRE. Yeah, it's, it's.
So it all comes.
None of, none of that other stuff has anything to do with this, correct?
I mean, I think.
It's historical information, but this is a totally new application.
I think, so first of all, just for the record, SECRE is a type-two action to consider, uh, a building inspector appeal. So this is, this determining, your determination will be a type-two action pursuant to the regulations. Um, but with regard to the uses, I think SECRE will apply absolutely to, you know, we do have to consider SECRE when we, when you consider this application because depending on the use, it could be vastly different, the, the impacts, the environmental.
Of course.
Potential environmental impacts.
Mm-hmm.
It can be vastly different from one use to another. We saw that with, um, with our other application where someone was trying to make a pre-existing non-conforming use, a retail use, change from one to another. The board limited the retail uses to those that matched the office district, um, the planning board to make sure the impacts were the same, right? So you can see that some uses will be more impactful than others.
Of course.
Environmentally.
So it's kind of going back to giving a permit before the SECRE review and knowing the uses is sort of a backwards way of doing this because SECRE may impact, have an, it may have an impact on this. I mean, it is, it's really a ga, an information gathering.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, in terms of the SECRE analysis, I, I just would totally disagree with the opposition's, uh, couching of the application. Um, we put in our memo, uh, why it would meet, uh, two of the exemptions under SECRE. Uh, so that is for the board to determine, uh, actually for the building inspector to determine when the application is filed. Um, there's, you know, she's skipping ahead a step to say that, uh, from the building permit filing, that the application would be pos-decked and have to be a full SECRE analysis. That is absolutely not the way SECRE law works. Um, so there needs to be initial determination based on, uh, a submission of a short form or long form, what type of action it is. If it's a type-two action, it's completely exempt. If it's an unlist, if it's a type-one or unlisted, um, then the board would have to determine whether or not to issue a negative declaration or a positive declaration. Only if it was declared that there was a positive declaration, would we be subject to a full-blown SECRE analysis.
Well, no, but that's what we're saying, but we're saying that hasn't been done, correct? There was no, th- th- those, um, applications were never submitted, so, right.
But I just don't want to skip ahead three steps to say that we're going from, um, no, uh, SECRE review to all of a sudden we're doing a positive, uh.
No, 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 we're not, we're not. No, we're not saying that, we're just saying that the, the step of, of going through the SECRE process wasn't done. We don't know what, we don't know what the result of SECRE is gonna be, I mean, I don't know.
And, and SECRE.
Be, and there's no, no lead agency was determined, none, none of that has.
And SECRE can't be done until they determine what the use is.
What the use is, right, so.
It's, it's.
It goes back to the use.
It, it comes back to wanting to ask the applicant what the uses are or if, um, as their lawyer or counsel, you can advise them to amend the application to include the uses and.
And start all the processes.
Right.
But, yeah, I do think that what's before this board is determining whether the issuance of the building permit has its, was correct and you have to issue a determination.
Right, right.
To that effect before you're, you know, by the next meeting, so that we can apply with the court's order.
Right, so, so the, the question now comes back to our building inspector felt comfortable to issue this shell only that the future steps would be okay. We are saying, when we read the code, we're not sure if we're comfortable without knowing the uses so the SECRE could do.
I don't, well, I guess my position is I don't see how you can separate the two. I mean, I think that they're entitled to rebuild the building, but we need to know what their uses are so that they can do the whole process. It's sort of like a truncated, it's, it's not the correct.
The only way I see that they can do it, they can build the shell, they spend the money, it's their money to be spent to build the shell. Then they go get one, two, or three, four stores in there or, and then apply to us who those tenants are gonna be with those.
Yeah, but their applicant, the building isn't designed that way, it has one door.
Such.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, um, it's design, I, I, we don't know. I mean, I don't, it, it again, th- th- that's saying that it's going to be, uh, like Liz was talking about, like a retail mini mall then. But that's a different sort of use. Right. But we don't know if that's what their objective is, correct?
Right. So do we ask? Do you want to get into that?
We don't need to rule on that.
We're just really wrong. Right, right. Um, so at this point, let's go to the public. David, if you, um, want to share with us.
So you have a little background, because I'm the only one. I brought out my uncle. My name's Dave Scavoni, you know, I'm one of the principals, the principal. I'd like to go back to the beginnings. I'm the one, I brought out my uncle nineteen eighty. And this was always my property, my family's property, my kids' property. When they need to take this down, you know, I negotiated five years before two thousand and eight with this village, and we all sat down, in fact, we actually had that parking lot as part of the deed of free for the village, no one even knows. I negotiated that village parking lot back in the day as part of the village property for a dollar a year. I negotiated years of this, it said, I'm not taking it down unless I get a lift, so anyway. Time moved by, zoning's changed, uses have changed in town. The market's changed. We went to two-story, because the village came to us, please put apartments here, please. So we said, okay, we'll put it in the second, third floor. Oh, we come here forty-three times, throw me out. All right, so we're the two-story. You do apartments, we'll let you, we did what we thought the market wanted. It wasn't like we, we wanted bigger, but this is what the village told us they wanted. We think we were doing well, in fact, they even changed the off-the-zone middle ones. So that changed what we were gonna do. So obviously, things changed, but I'd like to mention very importantly, is we signed the lease just because they gave us the property back in two thousand and fifteen. That was one of the leases, though. We still had it, that lease said we had to file the site management plan, which means, and I'll tell you, I'm building, I'm building, building myself, I am a builder, I build thousands of buildings. That required, would have said many different things. So that test came, we didn't know if we could even put certain things there until that day. Yes, we were trying to get a building permit for what the village was wanting, well, it's what they wanted, you've all changed since then, this is what they wanted at the time. So we went back and forth, and then these neighbors, of course, sued everybody, threatened everybody, so we kept going, we made it back to what we want. But no one ever said, oh, you gotta build exactly where you want. They actually said the opposite. Build some apartments, it's the village's apartments, so we were doing what people wanted at the time. This is, so, things have happened, but that site management plan did not comment to jan, I called them every six months for this plan. Because I knew, even if I had a permit, I didn't know if we were gonna put vapor barriers on it or they were gonna maybe do airflow systems, they had all these things designed, and I did not know it in two thousand and twenty-two. Even if you would give me approval, I still couldn't start it at that date. And that's the truth, and I am the builder, and I've been dealing with this myself. My, my parents are eighty-five, they, they don't, you know, I've been handling this, I'm a builder. And yes, we made some mistakes, we, we, so we were doing what was right for the village, so I'm gonna say, we never, we love this village and we never intend to do anything but what they want, and that's it.
So we appreciate that and obviously this has been a long, a very long process.
Down your throat, threaten to sue you, this wouldn't have even be here. If I knew fifteen years ago this was gonna happen, of course I would never agree with the village and help the village, I would have told them all to, whatever.
Okay, so here's it.
I, this is what happened, and we are in this situation, and you have to help us out, because this is a hardship that's just too much for us. And no, I don't know, yes, we had civil, they win, but they're not involved anymore. And I don't know what I'm gonna do, down there, the market changes every day, there's gonna be an office or a store, I don't know. Because I have put it out there, because no one even believes we're ever gonna get a permit. So how are you gonna go to someone and say, oh, yeah, yeah, when are you gonna get a permit, you get a business move in there? Do you know? It's impossible. You're business people, you can't just tell them, oh, when is it gonna happen? You get a business move in there. Do you know? It's impossible. You're business people, you can't just tell them, oh, when is it gonna happen? Uh, I'm not sure. So you can't get a tenant like that. It's not gonna happen.
That's a good point.
You cannot do it.
I mean, one thing that we.
That's what I wanna say, that's all.
No, no, we we appreciate that because that is very helpful for us to understand why the use wasn't there. Because given that if we just, and and if we just read the code as the code is written, multiple points, it's showing that a use needs to be included. So the one thing would be if if we were to, now we have a better understanding. If we were to say, okay, this is a unique exception, but it means that. However, you are going to try to fill that, you are gonna be limited. You're limiting yourself, you know that because.
Well, I think that.
I tend to, I'd like to say that, because you want to build what they need.
Right.
Of course, we had five stores, not four, but you know, doesn't matter. We made two into one. You know, there were fifteen employees, you know. If I do one or two stores, to me, that's a lot less non-conform, but that's beside the point.
What we.
But nobody wants these little shops right now. You know, these shops are eight thousand, they're going, you know, it's very hard to put back, because no one really, you know, it's not high demand. It could be offices, yes, maybe, but till I know when I have building permit, no one's gonna do anything.
Well, what we normally do in these kinds of situations, where I've done in the past, is that you would present to us. Sort of a list of the uses that you might, potentially you have in the building, and then we approve them. That's what is normally done. We don't just say, build a building and you can do anything you want.
You've changed this on me since I started, so you've you've put more constraints on me. Changed the zoning on me six months or a year too late.
We, we didn't do that.
Yeah, I know that. You, I didn't even personally.
But you're currently dealing with a, you know, a new code, new set of uses, new zoning, et cetera. So to me, I mean, just kind of writ large, of course, we really support your family and what you've done for this village. And and we all want to see something happen there, and we just want it to be right and good for the village, good for you, good for families and so on. But but I'm saying, let's kind of look forward and figure out how do you amend this this permit. It gives us some comfort and a little clearer idea of what's gonna happen there. So we have something concrete to respond to.
Does the village need five little stores, little boutiques, or does this this village need something where we can get, you know, medicine? I don't know, you tell me. I I lost the seven long, they ran. But can another community, this village needs something, and it doesn't need five more little shops.
But.
Sorry, it doesn't need it.
In in the office district, though, there are a number of permitted uses. Um and all you need to do is sort of give us a grocery list of what you think you might. You know, but that's, it doesn't matter.
We understand that, we understand.
It doesn't matter because, I mean, I can think of a project that Dennis presented to us years ago. And he didn't know who the tenants were gonna be, so he gave us sort of a grocery list of of various. Uses that could go in there, and we approved them so that if he changed. Um, you know, if renters changed, the use would be acceptable, and they were all. Um, you know, vetted by the board, and it would, so it, it, I mean, that's the sort of thing. You don't have to come back, no, but.
No, if they're within that list, if they're within the list.
Have to come back.
So if you make the list broad enough to give you some optionality, and it would also. Um, when secret goes to do their study, that um.
They said four thousand, so it's three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, I don't have to do it? I mean, I mean, these are questions I wouldn't have to ask. Because you're making me, now you're making me build something I didn't have, smaller and less valuable.
No, no, we're not necessarily, we're not, we're not necessarily saying that.
Well, I think a secret is, it's four thousand, that's like two years.
Well, well, it depends on what the um, what the secret, the application for secret determines, what type you are.
Well, I'm letting you very disappointed. I have talked to my lawyer, he's very, my lawyer is, this is what he does, solely does. He's very good at it, and he's he's very professional, and I have to rely on him to help me with this. That's why I hired him.
Right, um and we appreciate that and and.
I told you what I did, and I told you we couldn't build what we really wanted till then, and things have changed. Everything has changed. They put a monster in front of us, let's stop this from building any. That's the reason why no one wanted two or three-story buildings. Because they built four or five in front of me, it grew in the village, and then who came out to hurt me? That hurt me, nobody else. That hurt me. These people building monsters only hurt me, anybody else, you know, it's helped the whole village, but it hurts me the most, for sure. I'm definitely in hardship here, and this is just too much, and I parent everybody, it's just too much.
So I just want to ask the question, um. If this is such a unique situation, and there's a relief valve with respect to the code. Is this one where we would be comfortable to give them this relief? Because that's.
The letter says, if we're not, you know, we, this is hardship.
There's no relief, there's no relief in the notice. The only thing this board can decide today. It is, is with respect to the appeal of this bill. That's what was noticed to the public. There's no notice of any relief.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is relief to, if the code, if the code says we're supposed to have a use.
Yeah.
And we don't have a use.
Yeah.
That would be the relief that I would be giving, or suggesting that.
You can't give a use variant. I I'm I'm not clear. Let me just be very clear about what what council said about the relief valve. The zoning code as applied to private property is unconstitutional without a zoning board appeals. Granting relief when there's constraints that, and hardships, and they need the five-part test, or they need the use variance test, okay? That's that's just the basic premise of zoning, that there has to be the ability to give property owners relief, because not every property is the same, right?
I'm sure.
That's very important. Um but that's different and apart from what's before you today. The only thing that's before you today is an appeal of a building permit that was issued to Mr. Stavola, um and his property. And that's what you have to determine. Um with respect to, you can make a determination with respect to uses, uh but you can't give my use variants, because it wasn't noticed, and he hasn't made an application.
Correct.
But a use variance wouldn't necessarily.
I wouldn't be giving you use variants.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
But a use variance doesn't mean we we give him um the the option, no uses, correct?
No, use variance is like, say he came in here seeking a use that was not permitted in the office district.
Right.
Where the zoning.
Right, right.
Or the zoning.
Right.
But we can't, uh the, this board cannot totally ignore the use of this property.
No, yeah, that's right. That's that's been brought up by the fact that building permit mentions it, right?
Right.
Retail use.
Right.
Will come back. The separation of that building, you can opine on that for sure. Yes, but you shouldn't be giving the variants, that's my point.
Right.
Uh yeah, I wasn't trying to give a variance.
Okay.
I'm just trying to say. No.
You have to move back my building, and I don't know what it's gonna be, and I don't think I should be determined to do that at this point, because I don't really know. If I knew, I'd be the first one to put it on the table for you. I really would. I mean, I lost, I lost, I didn't want to say I had my loss. It's disgusting. I think the town knew what I had. But I lost the deal because it took two years, and they knew it, and they would sue me, and that's why they sued me. And that's it. They're gonna sue you anyway about what they do. I think it's gonna matter what they do. They're gonna sue us forever. So that's what they do. So you might as well get used to it, fuck it all.
I guess, though, that what we're saying is that we need to know some uses in order for the process to continue. I mean, we're not.
I don't see why that matters. If I'm building the same size, the same, but why should that matter? If I'm building a building, I have to come back to you later for that. I want my building up, and then I can show it to someone, say, look.
But you see.
You can't rent it, so the shell is up. You can't tell me a King Colony, for all the buildings up in these places, they don't have tenants yet. I don't see where that's.
No, but they were, but but there was a a general, as as Liz stated, that's it, that's a general use, there, that's um a mall use, a retail.
Well, then I can build it up to show somebody. I mean, I don't know how you rent it. I guess I can guess at everything, right? And then, and then, just like you say, throw darts at it, but that's how you.
But if you, if you, if you and your lawyer agree on the potential list that is conforming. And in the retail space, and you list that as potential uses.
I want to just interject. I think that the board's purview today is with respect to the permit that was issued. And I'm trying to help. I just want to make sure that that's really where the purview is, and I think you've heard from the public, you've heard from both sides. And I think that you should try and determine how you're going to proceed with respect to this permit that was issued. Are you going to affirm it? Are you going to overturn it? Are you going to affirm it in part, overturn it in part? What 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 exactly does the board want to do? Do you want to um overturn it and address all those other issues in your determination that you've talked about? I think that's a good way to go, or, you know, affirm it and address all those other situations too, you know what I mean?
Mm hmm.
Like, everything you're talking about is relevant to a future, perhaps to a future application. And you should declare the use or do a list of uses to you to the next one, if that's how you feel. But it's not um relevant to this application before you today.
Right, I understand.
That's not before you.
So when we close, we close the public hearing, where is Alec? We've lost Alex, is he?
I don't know where Alex is.
Did you see him? Is he coming?
No, I wasn't.
I can go see.
He has a, he isn't.
Yeah, phone call. He took the phone.
Madam Chair.
Ye- yes.
Yes, this was in respect to the shell permit only. And what I'm hearing is two conflicting things, and I just want to be clear. So is there a mechanism under the village code that allows for a shell building permit to be issued under any circumstance?
No.
Uh no, it doesn't appear so. It appears that it's connected to use. A permit issued is connected to use. That's what the code is.
Was there previously, was there previously a mechanism that a shell permit could be allowed?
No.
I I don't know. Uh we've lost our our attorney at the moment.
Not to my knowledge, was there ever a section of the code that allowed for a shell permit?
Who was that speaking?
That was Tiffany.
Okay.
I mean, in, I, Ham and I have been on the board quite a long time, and we've never had um. Uh no use attached to a building. I mean, and we've done, there've been, have been a number of commercial buildings that have been done while we've been here. And they've all had uses, and sometimes, as I, as I said, there will be a number of uses that were listed. For us to consider, so that they would have options in terms of rental, because they didn't know who their tenants would be. And that's the way it was always handled.
With with the thought process that when you understand the use, you understand the impact on the environment.
Right.
You understand the need for parking, et cetera, et cetera, so.
These all were considerations when we reviewed it, parking and and so forth.
Yes.
And all the things that they initially talked about, a synagogue and and so forth, was one episode after another.
Right.
And we reviewed it, and we made the decision at that time based on the information we received.
Right, and those all had use attached to them.
Exactly.
Right, so when Liz just went through the potential um things that we could. Vote on, um and we can vote with four if Alex.
Vote right today.
Well.
We have, we have.
We have to have some kind of one way or the other, um.
Because we have a timeline with a judge.
So so here, we could. One of the options that. Could be is that we vote with them making an amendment, on the condition that they would make an amendment to include. Conforming acceptable uses.
Well.
I I think that's only noticed in time, I won't, I, you know, that would, that's not gonna be able to be noticed.
All we really.
Decision per certain court order.
All we really need to do is today, determine whether or not the permit was issued properly.
And you can address all these other ancillary issues.
In the decision, but that's all we need to determine, and we just, I think we should just make sure there's nothing that the two attorneys want to address. And then we should close the public hearing, get Alex back, and.
Yep.
Come to a decision and move on.
Okay, so Tiffany, do you have any last comments that you want to make?
Last comments, um, you know, I won't go over the building itself. I think the board has made their decision with respect to the building, although you know I disagree. Um, the use is very important, and I do think that the board should um find the building permit to be invalid. And then, as I said, explain to, explain in your decision why it's invalid and what what has to happen from here on out. With respect particularly to the uses, and then the applicant can go ahead and submit a new building permit. That has all of the appropriate information, including a survey, because to be honest with you, there isn't even a survey in the file right now. That indicates the lot lines and how far apart, how far from the lot lines that the structure is intended to be. There is no certified survey in the file. So I think there's a lot of things that the board has to require i- if they're going to allow this permit to stand. Uh in my mind, it it's an application where you deny the permit, deny the applicability of.
Tiffany, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a minute. We do have, we do have a completed survey with all the lot lines, with the uh setbacks, et cetera. We we do have that, so that has to be noted, because we have a survey um by an official surveyor, so that is just uh incorrect.
Okay.
So then.
I will just, I will just point out that subsurface sewer disposal facilities, drainage structures, those aren't things, again, Suffolk County Health Department approval. For how this is going to hook up to the sewer system, and what those structures underground are going to look like, given the environmental constraints on the property. Or something that really also has to be included in the building permit application.
Right, so I I believe um there's been discussion that they would be hooked up to the village sewer and um.
And I I believe that they would be. I believe they would be, but there is a mechanism to do that. Um a- as the board is very aware, when you go, when you're asking to hook up to the sewer system, keep in mind, the property has not been hooked up for some period of time. I don't know what the underground structures look like there for for purposes of a connection. I'm assuming it's all gonna have to be be rebuilt pursuant to the SMP. Um and there are no plans to do that. Those plans usually get routed through the village's consultant. Um and then are okayed by the building inspector for construction. Um both for capacity reasons and for reasons of engineering has to be signed off on by the village's consultant, and that has not happened either. So there's a lot of considerations in the building permit that still have not been addressed by the applicant. And so my position would be that the app, that the application that we have submitted be granted, the permit deemed invalid, and the applicant. Um sent back to the building department to file a proper building permit that includes the use. And all of the other things that are required under the, under village, state, and county law for a building permit.
Thank you. Um Kenneth, you have some closing comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I I want to thank the, of those zoning board of appeals for um their thorough review and and analysis. Um, you know, you really demonstrated that you've really, you know, taken the time to really work through, you know, some of these important issues. On behalf of my client, and I I really do appreciate that. Um but I I would ask the board to um, you know, individually review all, we submitted two full memos. Uh to the board with all of the salient arguments contained therein. And um it with respect to some of the, you know, comments that were just made by the opposition's attorney. Um, I I disagree with respect to um having to file Suffolk County Department of Health approvals. Uh, you know, uh they seem to be hell-bent on delaying, you know, this process even further than what my client has already um. You know, been dealing with 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 respect to um trying to get this building built. But notwithstanding that, the Suffolk County Department of Health approval is no doubt going to be needed for a C of O to be issued, and we have no issue with that whatsoever. But it's just not necessary at 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 the um initial building permit stage, uh which is where we're at. If the board is so inclined as to um uh agree with the position by the opposition. That uh the building permit was improperly issued, um then, as I pointed out, there is a mechanism. Uh there's a box right on the building permit application for an amended permit. Um if the board could indicate uh whatever deficiencies they see, uh so that they can be addressed. Uh by my office and by my client, you know, we're happy to do so. Um and I just, I I know you corrected the record with respect to the survey, but I also just want to point out that many times. Uh meets and bounds descriptions are put on site plans, which satisfy the survey requirement. Um and that basically takes care of the survey requirement. So, you know, in 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 some, I would just like to ask the board to take into account, you know, the totality of the circumstances. All of the information that we provided. I know there's a lot of documentation, but I would ask the board to take it back and and reserve decision. Um in order to digest all that information before rendering its decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So first, we want to close the public hearing. It's a motion.
So moved.
I second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Um, so now we're, because of the timeline, Liz, I, I think that's what we need, we need to understand, um, that in order for you to write an opinion so that it can get to the, um, state judge or, right, by the end of the month, you need us to vote today.
Well, I mean, I need to know, you know, what decision you want me to write. So, that's all. I mean, I, you know, you don't need to vote necessarily. You can vote after you, you can actually officially vote after you, um.
Read what you.
Read what I write, make sure you agree with it. You don't have to vote today. You can vote on the seventeenth when a fair decision is in front of you. But you need to tell me what you want to, what you want to decide with respect to this.
Can I just ask, and I apologize to the board, uh, for having to step out. I have a kind of emergency situation. Um, but, um, can somebody summarize what you guys?
Can you do this? You didn't miss anything, really. I mean, it's just ongoing discussions of use and that sort of stuff. Um, I mean, my, my position is, I believe that because they submitted, at, you know, that started the process within the three-year period, that they should be allowed to build, replace their building. Um, definitely, um, it, it, but it needs a use attached to it to get a permit. So I don't think the permit was issued properly, because there's no use to attach to it. And then the use is going to trigger a secret application or, um, and other things. And I think that because the building isn't identical, it would then require our, you know, full blown, you know, going to the Architecture Review Board and the regular process of any permit. Um, I don't think it's not going to require us to give them variances unless there are use variances that needed, are needed.
Use variances or parking variance.
Right, parking varies based on use. Um, but that would be sort of my position.
Right, so.
I agree with that.
So currently, they, on the parking thing, they have more than what was there before. Um, so it looks like they've addressed that. But obviously, it depends on how many uses.
Right.
How many uses are in there. Um, and I guess I'm, the thing that very much surprised me is I felt that they were going to be able to go back to two thousand and eight. Um, because that's when it was taken away from them and that they were going to be able to have approval on those things. So it's new to me that we're going to say we're in the office district, um, and that we're in the two thousand twenty-two rules. I, I interpreted that differently, I have to admit. Um, uh, so, but the.
Well, that's because, again, the uses were conforming. We're not pre-existing non-conforming uses.
So, all, all Liz is saying is that they still have to be conforming.
They have to conform.
Right.
Right. And I thought they had to be conforming to two thousand and eight. Right.
We're not non-conforming uses that are allowed to continue unless they're abandoned and everything else.
Right, I think we're, I think we're all, I believe we're all comfortable with the three-year period. It's extended and there's been no abandonment and, and we're, we're comfortable with that interpretation, I believe.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, we, we would agree with the interpretation that we are permitted to re-establish two thousand and eight uses under the previously existing zoning code.
And I would object to that strenuously. But the code was changed in two thousand and nine and again in two thousand twenty-two without objection from that. They have no vested rights in zoning or uses.
But we've closed, we've closed the public hearing, so.
We've closed the meeting.
Yeah.
No, not, we can't close the meeting yet. So I just wanted to, and the, the reason that use is important is because of section three hundred dash seventeen point two subsection B. Um, I don't know, what do you, subsection, sub subsection one, where it states that, um, plans and intended use.
Right, I think that's the.
That's the key thing.
That's the key.
And that's in the code, and that's really the only thing we need to say to say that the permit was, wasn't issued properly.
Right.
Correct. Wasn't stopped.
But use wasn't.
Liz worked, Scott summarized about five minutes ago. That's my view as well, and I think if you could write an opinion to that fact.
But do we want to include in the conditions? I guess the, the timeline piece is, if we, are we saying that if they make an amendment and include the various authorized uses of two thousand twenty-three? Now we are, um, you know, conforming uses. That'll be a, because that's what we talked a lot about.
I mean, they can re, they can withdraw this permit and do whatever they want. We're not, we're not, um.
So basically, if we just kill this, then it's done.
But I, I would say that there should be something in there that says that at this stage of the game, they need to complete this process. If they were to withdraw their permit and just disappear for six months. Right, right, right.
I think they lose their rights to do anything, no?
That's a very different.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking the, the premise, the, the basis on which we.
You're denying it.
We're denying it.
Denying the permit, right?
They're not withdrawing it.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, no, I'm not, I think, I, maybe I didn't say it clearly. Yeah, we deny it. I think the decision will in some way or another invite them to come back with a new permit, doing X, Y, Z, establishing the uses, et cetera. But if they were just to disappear and, and not bother to reapply, at some point, there can't be an endless timeline on this thing. At some point, they lose their right to, to.
Build, right.
I think, right? So they're not going to do that, of course. But I just think to cover our butts, we should make sure that it's clear that they can't just kind of disappear for three years and come back and then apply for something. Um, we should put some timeline on it, I think. And just to reapply, as long as they.
So, I mean, I guess, we, we, we didn't even really.
Make a decision.
We didn't even really get to the point of this most recent letter that they received that allowed them to build, because we're just saying it's in process. So, that's another date to go to now, the two thousand twenty-two date, which gives them three.
Well, no, 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 we're not.
We didn't even discuss that.
No, but we're not. Feel is, is that they have to complete this process. So, fine, go back, they get this permit rejected, they come back with a new approval. But they need to get, they need to stay in this process until they get a permit, a permitted, approved permit and then build. They can't step away from the process at, at this point.
Right.
Too long.
I think we.
What we, what we said before, what we, we sort of agreed on was that they fell within the three-year window from twenty fifteen initially to initiate the process. And because the process is continuing, that they're still within that process.
Yeah, exactly.
So, i- it, the, 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 any other date, the two thousand twenty-two date doesn't mean anything.
Doesn't mean anything. I, I, all I'm saying is they properly initiated the process before two thousand eighteen deadline. They're still in the process, even if we reject the permit, ask them to come back with a new permit application. That's all fine, they're continuing the process. They can't, they just can't walk away, you know?
And they can certainly amend.
They need to finish the process.
Right, they can take the application and amend it. And add in the, the missing pieces, which is basically use, which is then going to trigger things like SECR and.
So, so, but can I just ask a question, though? Uh, if, if our building inspector gave the approval for this to be built as a shell and, and said they'll come back for whatever use variances, um, are we, are we agreeing that if they come back with the list of potential uses, that then the building inspector can do a building permit?
Well, that, it would, no, it, he, it triggers the whole, it will just start a regular process that, but you, depending on what uses they come back with, potentially, yes. But all we have to say right now is that they didn't comply with this section of the code that requires a permit to be only issued when there are plans and intended use indicated.
Right.
That's all we have to, correct?
Because we just don't want to start a precedent that.
Well, we, there's no provision in the code for people to just build buildings all over the place with no use attached to them.
Right.
Because then you could put anything up for any.
I don't understand this, because the process had been established in two thousand eighteen. But what have we been doing for the last three years then?
When you had the different work session and.
We, we, yes, we had some work sessions, but they were here before us.
Right. But, but this application is totally new.
Yes, but you're indicating when doctor, when, um, the inspector gave them the permit, gave them the permit to build.
Yes.
And we have to accept it or not accept it.
Correct.
That's.
That's the only question. That's the only question. And because our code says that you need plans and use, we can't really, there's no provision in the code to build just shells, a building.
Do we have a survey of the shells? Or a plan, an architectural plan of the shell?
Yes, yes, they're.
You showed us that.
Yes.
And before this was brought, brought to us initially for the variance, were all the other indications about the septic tanks and, and so forth and the sewage? Was that all done prior? Well, you, you're indicated you had a building and you were going to build it. I just wanted to know, they were asking about, before the, before it came to us, they had, they had gone before the planning board.
No, no, not with this application. That's why we're here. The only thing that happened with this particular application is it went to the building inspector.
In two thousand eight?
No, 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 just.
Two thousand fifteen.
No, 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 no. Just a few, in October of this year, this application went to the building inspector and he gave them a permit. It didn't go to any board, it didn't go to SECR review, it never came before us, it didn't go anywhere. It just.
Because it followed the, it followed the memo. It followed the Freddie Thiel memo that they didn't have to go in front of anyone else if they did the in-kind, which is what they're doing. They are doing the in-kind.
Even the Fred Thiel letter.
The, the use piece is missing.
Right, even the Fred, Fred Thiel letter addresses use. It attaches use to replacing the building.
Or it says, or doesn't, let's just look at Freddie Thiel's letter one more time.
It mentions use.
Does.
Did you read the permit? Yes, and that is the record.
Yeah, but does the Fred Thiel thing say you have to have the use before? Or does it say?
But our code does.
Right, it's not, his just says you may have to go for a variance.
He's just restating the code.
Yeah.
And the code says that you have to have a use attached to the permit.
Right, it's the code that says it.
See, it's.
Excuse me.
And uses.
Who determined initially that we, they needed a variance? They had, they had a.
No, they don't need any variances.
So what happened was initially, they sent an application requiring variances. All the prior applications, there's been three applications.
Yes.
One, you know, but all of those were withdrawn. And they came back and said, we just want to replace what we have, um, in place and in kind. And that's why they reached.
Okay.
Um, and that's what's being appealed to you today, is whether or not that was issued in error. So that's.
So.
Being the board's consensus.
Do you have, do you have enough?
Yeah, I have enough findings from the board, I think, to move forward and write a decision, which I will certainly make sure we read into the record for consideration if we're looking at.
And you'll send us in advance to read. And the only other thing I would just say is I think the tone, Liz's tone, it's always extremely professional and so on. But the tone should be encouraging, meaning, I know you can't editorialize, it's a legal document and so on. But we should encourage them to complete the process. We want to see this happen, you know, blah, blah, blah. It's extent that you've got any room to do that. More positive.
I don't know, does anybody else have any other?
No.
We just. So we.
I guess.
So, this is the part that's really just replacement of the building and retail uses without any additional approvals from the village. So, here's, I guess that's a question.
Well, no, because they didn't tell us that uses. Correct?
So, right now, we're just deciding, okay, it's just for a shell and it didn't include the uses.
Yeah, remember, I think what, what you have to incorporate in the term is what, what zoning applies, right? Since you're confusing this two thousand year zoning with what's a zoning is today. So, I think that's a big distinction where you have to make, because, um, again, they were conforming. We're not pre-existing non-conforming uses at the time that they had a right to continue.
Yeah.
Right, it's a difference, it's a different matter under the law, we treat it differently.
Like.
You don't get to, um, maintain, like, there's, they're not, you know, the conforming uses. Now the zoning has changed, and so they're not, you know, they said that certain retail uses are permitted, certain ones are not. You should make that distinction, make a decision.
I guess that's the grandfather part that I.
But you don't grandfather conforming uses, that's my point.
Right.
Grandfather non-conforming, non-conforming.
Right, and it's like, and I get that.
That's the distinction.
I, I get that, and so.
Your grandfather non-conform, what, what becomes non-conforming?
Right.
Or was it non-conforming?
Years ago, we had to determine Harbor Heights. Harbor Heights was a non-conforming, the gas station, non-conforming use in a residential district. And there was no question about its use being continued, because it was a grandfather non-conforming use, correct?
Well, I guess my, my question to you, because I get that a hundred percent. But could they, I'm just wondering. So if we say, come back, establish the uses in your permanent application, um, you know, they need to be conforming with current code and zoning and da, 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 da. Could they come to us with this new application and ask for a variance to the conforming? To do something that they'd say.
An applicant can always come to this board and seek a variance, a use variance.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Difficult standard to me, to show that there's no other potential use of the property that we, you know, there's a really, it's a difficult standard, I can read it to you, but it's why you never see use variance.
But that's what I'm saying, but if there, but if there was some, if there was some two thousand, if there was some two thousand eight use, you know, the, uh, the video shop or something, and that didn't work in today's zoning.
Correct.
They could seek a variance to re-establish a video shop if they wanted, okay?
They could also seek a variance for use that's not permitted in two thousand eight or now.
Yes, exactly.
They can do whatever they choose.
Right, as long as.
It's a very difficult standard.
Right.
It's not just they can do.
Right, no, 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 I mean, they can apply.
Apply.
They can apply. Right, right.
Yes, they can absolutely make the application that they, you find that they meet the standard, you can grant it.
Right.
I, I feel like we, Liz has got all the information she needs, and then we should vote to ask her to write it up.
Yep, so make that motion.
So moved.
You just make a motion to close the meeting.
Right.
And you'll make a motion to adopt the decision when we read it. So we're, we're table and that's sort of, we close the hearing, so yeah, you can table this the seventeenth for decision.
Okay, so if we have a motion to close. Meeting.
Second.
Well, wait, we need to make a motion to table this.
Yeah, make a motion.
First, we'll make a motion to table.
So moved.
Conversation to January seventeenth meeting.
So moves, now we can close.
Second, cut.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll make a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
You can be the first.
Actually, who did it? Alex?
The ham, ham did it, then he had done it earlier.
Thank you.
Because he was very keen to close it.
Right.
All in favor.
Aye.